Approved it. Law number three.
Okay.
Say.
Just to clarify, so you can also. Two of us were here. And somebody was home.
Yeah.
Outside of the two that could be absent.
Yeah.
Third person would have to know where they are and have that open.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And that's consistent with how the open meetings law was before. So prior to its revision this past spring. If somebody were to participate remotely, they would have to say, I am at this address and my door is open to the public. If someone would like to watch the meeting from there. But so a third member, a fourth member could could do that as well if if needed. But it just the public has to be able to to watch a forum of the board at at a location. Or more than one location.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Um, so I'm sorry, I apologize. The under two being for the notifying the other members or presiding officer will go into court. How much time requirement would be necessary?
Well, because we we already noticed the meetings being hybrid, it can be the the day of. So all of a sudden, if, you know, you had to go home from work early, you were sick.
So it does have to be like a 24 hour timeframe or anything of that nature?
Right. They when I when I worked at the NICOM on this, they had originally recommended 72 hours. But because we already know our meetings using video conferencing software, they said that was unnecessary. So it could be in theory at five o'clock, all of a sudden you're you're sick, you're not sure if you can. It could something happen.
So it's just a notice, presiding officer, so it can be stated at the meeting that that person is going to be. Is going to be remote.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Here you go. So members have to appear on camera when they are. Voting or anything taking place when you if you move something or you second something or you vote. You have to not only be heard, but you have to be seen.
What was TV's working?
Well, or it doesn't have to be in here, but just on the video conference. Right, yeah. So it'll be recorded, just so they know it's it's you and not an imposter.
Any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Now, what if a member has a definite family that can't attend the meeting? Is that included?
Yeah, so extraordinary circumstances. Look at it that way. It's not going to Disney. But it's, you know, something in that case and that and that's why, you know, it's phrased in here. That it's included but not limited to disability or illness caregiver responsibilities. Or any significant or unexpected factor or event that precludes.
I was ready to answer my question. I just wanted to know.
Excellent.
Absolutely. No more questions or comments. We propose a total of hearing. And we will resume the regular board meeting and end up right now. It is cycle review for 15 hours. So.
I'm John Stockley. I'm the counsel for Vertical Bridge. And I have with me Skip Francis from Creighton Manning, who's the engineer for the project. We just wanted to hop back because we haven't been here for a while, let you know where we are, what we've been up to. We had submitted responses, some comments from Lobella. And then last week got a supplemental request for information back. And we're in the process of revising the plans in response to those questions. And actually Jennifer's here today and Skip will have a chance to talk to her to be able to go through some of this before we submit the next. Response to make sure we're in the right direction of what we're doing. But I think we're moving ahead in a good spot. I mean, the some of the the main questions that Lobella had had to do with putting in a turnaround. For emergency vehicles and we're in the process now locating that turnaround and we'll revise the plans to show it. But in essence, we have a plan here. It's not really going to be exactly where it is. It's gonna. The the trucks will come in here. There's the compound. Then down in here would be the turnaround to come out. So it would be, you know, there's an existing building out towards the back of that property. And we would be just to the north of that building for like a T-bone turnaround. Uh, there are a lot of the other questions we've just resolved by changing the plans. There's a question if there was going to be grading outside of the lease area, which there's not. So we clarified that on the plans. Where we're going state while we power up, which will be all within our access east and that are these areas. It doesn't, there's not a lot of staging that goes into building one of them. When you bring the when you once you get the the peers and stack in the towers, like a one day, maybe it's.
Wow.
Yeah.
I was about to ask you how long it.
It it's it's really just a few pieces that you just put on and and then once that sign may go up and they'll they'll put the equipment up. There's a question about putting a knox box on the outside of the the gate. What we've often done as well, we'll have a series of locks all locked together. So if Verizon comes, they have a key to their lock and then they lock it. But the town, the village, I understand, wants a knox box approach. And and we're we'll put that on the on the gate for that fence comment. Does that satisfy your quest?
So who, everybody has a safety?
What happens is we'll have a key, but emergency services will have a key to that box. And I think within that is a key to get into the cell.
John, you can actually get a knox box lock, which it's the same thing. But instead of buying, I would do the lock because it's like a lot cheaper.
Oh, instead of the box?
A box.
But you know what? Well, whatever you.
Because we have that in, we have that on one of the gates up on them. Up on Manamro.
And that would be what, and I'm sure is that like a shared key?
Everybody, all the apparatus has a key in it that they can only dispatch can unlock it.
So that'll go into the chain of locks that we have. Okay, so would that work? Because that's how typically we do it. There'll be a chain of padlocks that every, like, you know, Verizon will have a lock. So when they want to get in, they just have to undo their lock and then they can take it all down. So this would be very similar where you, all the emergency services would have a lock that they would chain onto that lock to get in. And that's certainly fine with us.
So one lock we're doing is do the whole.
No.
Well, one lock doesn't do like, yeah, one lock lets anyone get, you know, get in. But usually it's only us that'll have one and any of the the carriers that are on there would have a lock. And so it's again.
So it's they'd do be six different locks. So say if you have six vendors there, there'd be six locks. But to be one lock would be for fire services.
Yeah, you get you get your.
And it's it's a knox box lock.
All right. Then we're certainly fine with that. But there's a question about barbed wire fence. We show a barbed wire atop the fence for security. It, you know, we'd ask the wave. I think you have a position against it. And usually it's good for safety to be able to have it there.
And what question are you on that?
It 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 was in the in the latest supplemental letter, it was question 21. Twenty-two. Prohibit barbed wire at the top of. And we would just ask the way that it's we just find security that and but either way. It's really up to you.
So so we just noted in our letter that the barbed wire is not consistent with the code. But the board can waive that requirement and allow the barbed wire to be installed.
That's something we talked about now or we could.
Well, we're gonna do a reply letter. We just figured for some of this, we would talk about tonight just to get. If someone was like, oh, this is not great, like better than we know now before we respond.
Yeah, hopefully up an opportunity, you know, hear some consensus to make a change. Right now they're showing the barbed wire and I think if you continue to show it, if you're not.
Yeah, you know, it really comes up. And the other had to do with security cameras. We don't have security cameras. We're not going to have lights that are not. Motion sensor. We're not going to have consistently on lights or off lights.
If any conservative.
That's not a requirement in the code at this time.
You have to go through the market anyway, which they have a camera on the front. To get in there.
Just the water to them.
I don't think they only have the one. I'm working.
There was also a question about the gate at the front of the property. Right where the the road had to access the entire property. And Jeff saw it was a gate. We questioned whether we should do a knock lock, knocks lock kind of thing there. But we're told that that gate, they never close that gate. So. The landlord came from that address. But we would not propose to do one there because it's never closed. It's the main access.
Yeah.
Then there was a question having to do with the floodplain application. We're filling in all that information and certification and, you know. We expect to be able to get everything back to you, you know, this week. And there's one or two items you need clarification, maybe you and Skip can talk tonight before we leave. So we know exactly what you're looking for and then we can submit the.
It's like muting, nobody can hear. Phil, can you mute your your? Phil?
I don't think it's Phil.
Thank you. He's asleep.
So that's really, we just wanted to get in here to see you again because it's been a while, let you know that we are working on this stuff and to do some kind of preliminary answers.
General, we have, I think there was a question about like maintenance, like snow removal type of thing. Is that one of the questions?
Yep, that was one of our questions on there.
And we'll agree, we'll agree to a condition that we keep that maintained and clear. Because we have to do that. Vertical Bridge has to do that for the carriers anyway. That's a requirement of us. They always have an ability with snow and maintain the the access road. So we'll make sure that it's both maintained and that that is plowed to get back to them.
And that would be from the gate down from the where the road splits to go down there? Not just here, here.
Right, we'll make sure, you know, they plow a lot of that anyway, they could get back there, but we'll just make sure it is.
Yeah, because it's private, so the village does do that.
Exactly. We'll make sure that it's that it's all plowed to to get all the way back to the facility. And and we're fine with the condition that.
It's about here from the front gate.
Right, well, we'll, right, we'll make sure that's all there.
We've got stuff now than later when it's. Last thing. All right, so anything else, Jen, from us or just giving us an update?
Yeah, and just seeing if there was any other questions while we, so that when we put this submission back in.
Yes, I highlighted the big, the big picture comments in the letter and you've gone over all of those, so thank you.
Which is, maybe like I said, Skip might show you where we wanted to run around this stuff and make sure that. And that's really it. That's our presentation. Just wanted to update everybody and let you know where.
Thanks.
We're kind of responsive.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need me for anything else?
Do you have any information other free for the bar?
I know that we are working on a report, but I'm not directly involved in this. I don't have any other updates to share.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you so much for coming in.
All right, open form.
First of all, I wish to thank Mayor Grineer for getting me white horse cross. It was very kind of him to do this for me. I truly did not expect it. However, once again, thank you very much for being frank. I appreciate those words. In fact, I'm using three of them already. The second one, I'd like to thank Clerk Don Hanner and the village office there for helping me resolve my problem with my telephone, which my telephone had inside wired status problems. So the next day they fixed it, so that ended my problem. I greatly appreciate their help. Third one, I'm delighted to see that two dugouts in the Nancy Lily baseball section, yes, and Smith Park are in the process of being replaced with dugouts, which need to be done. This is an important victory for me and everyone else in the village. Fourth, I'm glad to see that the north side of the road, which lies between Solero Fuel Station, which got lucky smart and two water filtration buildings have finally been repaired. Which I have raised this issue several times. So I'd like to thank the Skyline owner and the contractors for doing a good job of repairing the north side road. Number five, I'd like to grant my approval and support for the replacement of the current fencing. And with the new fencing around the baseball section, yes, it's mid part for several reasons. This recreation project needs to be done. And I'd like to know, is the fencing going to be aluminum or is it going to be galvanized steel?
Whatever's there now.
Has it been done or is it going to be done?
It's going to be done, but not yet.
All right, but I'll support it, just so you know. Number six, while picking up litter in Switzer Pope Park, I observed four evergreen trees are slowly dying due to climate reform, which is a problem worldwide. I wish to propose recommending to let volunteers plant eight new evergreen trees, like fir and spruce trees in the Switzer Pope Park. It needs to be done. As a number seven, I continue to get frustrated and upset by our village street sidewalks, parks, playgrounds and other public places in Logan Inn. Still being flooded up with litter and dog food. I'd like to propose that anyone who gets caught flooding up, you know, the village man answer leaving dog food on several places should now be slapped with fines and charge others. But give them more community service for about 64 days. So hopefully then they won't do those things no more. Now, eight, I got some concern about several fire hydrants and several villages in Logan Inn still remain in poor condition. Like six or seven fire hydrants are rusting or peeling paint or both. And I'd like to propose that these fire hydrants be sandblasted, primed and repainted. And plus remove plants, weeds and grass and trees which are blocking some fire hydrants. One is on the east end of Emma Road, the other one on the east end of Upwood Road. Now, under the number eleven, discussion regarding lowering village speed limit. I do support that it should be lowered from 30 to 20 miles an hour on all village streets. For health, you know, welfare, public safety reasons. We'd like to redo reduce any potential vehicle and pedestrian accidents. Just so you know, I have my support and I'd like to see that approval for reduced speed limit from 30 to 20 miles an hour. And I've been honored, I'm going to be serving as official groundkeeper for Nancy's kickball season. So I'm going to try to begin Thursday. And it's an honor for me to do this job. All right, I'm done speaking for now. Thank you very much.
Just keep in mind that it's jobs involved in PPW, such as cleaning the bathrooms and jobs that are specific to you. So I don't want you going outside of the dugouts or whatever is specific to the lease. It's the PPW's responsibility to do the other things.
I pick up litter, sweep the street, stuff like that.
Yep, okay.
Thanks a lot, Abby. Here you go, Brian.
Yeah, all right, we need a motion to approve the August 1st, 2022 meeting minutes that were postponed until today because we didn't have the board to approve them at the.
Make a motion to approve the August 1st meeting minutes?
Second.
All favor?
All right.
All right, same. We need a motion to approve the August 15th, 2022 meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 15th meeting minutes?
All favor?
All right.
Warren number six, general, 167,136 dollars and 85 cents. Water, 22,861 dollars and 39 cents. Sewer, 7,848 dollars and 81 cents totaling 197,847 dollars and 5 cents. MetLife check to 2059 for $28.50. Payroll number six, 99,000. I I don't, they just, Phil. Phil, unmute yourself, Phil.
Okay, that MetLife check was an extra check for the life insurance for a retiree. They sent a bill, I pay, I took them off the bill and then I had to put them back on because they were going to cancel the insurance for the other two guys. So after talking to Judy and we're working on it, we'll get a refund back. It's just paperwork for MetLife. Pain in my butt, but that was what it was. I took Grant's name off after he died and I shouldn't have.
When Grant passed away, we, he was, Grant was one of the three people to get life insurance. He took them off too early, so there was. So that's what that is, that payment is.
And we'll get reimbursed again.
Payroll number six, 99,993 dollars and 54 cents. And there's no transfers.
Second. All favor?
All right.
Okay, um, next is the approval of open block numbers freedom because of public hearing for.
Auction? Sure, I'll, I move that we approve local law number three. Local law authorizing video conferencing for public meetings for some of the public officers, law section 103 dash A.
Second, all favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so the Durango went to auction and it didn't meet the threshold that we were looking for. It, the highest bid we got was 15,500, which is more than we have ever had for any vehicle. So. In my association, Police Department in Syracuse put out a call for like vehicles. So I called them and it's the town of Cicero and he got authorization to give us 20,000 for our vehicle. So I'm just looking for approval from you, his boards already approved it.
Did you think about it?
Sure.
Should we counter that 20,200?
Yeah, I I wouldn't.
You and Steve spoke, there was a waiver, there was a waiver or something that's going to go with it that we're not responsible or my.
Yeah, we'll just put that on. Don has to get me a, like an invoice and we'll just put on the invoice that it it's as is.
There is no warranty, it's express or implied.
Exactly.
That was a vehicle heading to Syracuse.
The R upfitter is bringing a car out to Buffalo, so he's going to drop it off on his way up there at no cost to us. He's just.
Summer, well done.
Second. All favor?
All right.
Bye.
Yeah. And now the, now the bad news?
Yep. We're going to spend that money?
As quick as it comes in, it goes down. So the the Sheriff's Department, now we haven't gotten the bill as of yet. But the Sheriff's Department called me and said that they were sending us a bill for the two new guys that we hired.
Go back a little further and explain why.
Because they changed the law years ago that said that they can be reimbursed for the training that they put them through.
Within the first three years?
Yeah, so.
At a sliding scale?
They were on a year and it goes down from year to year to year. After three years, there is no charge. But there is a charge up until those three years are done. I don't know when the bill is coming. I don't know if a bill is going to come.
Do you think there's any negotiation with that or what?
I possibly, maybe politically, if we talk to Dan McCoy or, you know, someone.
Close to the sheriff.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think they're getting fed up with.
Well, that's what happens. And I, from what I learned from Water Elite, they are also possibly taking two. And they are budgeting for the bill.
Do you know how much it will be?
35,000.
Total.
Total.
Now, either this was a conversation or it happened when Michael Bryan was chief, because I remember this conversation with him. And either they sat there and sent us a bill and never did, or they did get a bill, but I don't know if you were, you would be.
I remember it. I just don't know if we got it or not. And Ty was so far, he was like six months from his three years. So I don't know. I know Colony budgets also for that, if that happens.
Because it's in the law, so it's not really.
Correct.
So the total is 35,000?
Yes.
So we may or may not get it.
Correct.
And we should improve expenditure of 35,000 for your officers. Should a bill come in?
Correct.
Up to or?
You just said, I'm not sure I'm going to be sending you a bill for 35,000. I said, okay.
Up to.
It wasn't the sheriff himself, it was.
Does that seem in line? Does that seem?
From what I was hearing from other departments, because I couldn't get an exact number and I couldn't call them because the guys that we're hiring. I didn't want them to know that we were hiring them. So it was kind of hard. They didn't know yet. So from what I was told from Rotterdam, it's in line for what we did get a bill for. Because they've been filming for.
Well, two guys are supposed to start next week.
And Coho's told me he just doesn't pay. I said, okay. He's like, I get those all the time. I don't pay. I said, well, we're not going to.
Well, we can get.
I mean, law enforcement, I don't pay in the laws, I mean.
It's a little bit odd, but.
Up to 35,000.
All favor?
All right.
You want to talk about the light R since we're on the police scene?
What? So, uh, last week was, wait, last week, Speed Week for across New York State.
Correct.
So I thought it'd be interesting to find out how we did with Speed Week.
I brought Kevin here. Kevin's got all the numbers. He was going to talk to you about how we did. Tickets.
Yeah, so it kind of runs over like a two week period with kind of three weeks. It touches base with a little bit of D W I. Well, it's a Labor Day weekend. So over that course of three weeks, it's 152 tickets that were issued. So roughly just over 50 tickets a week. With the only, you know, at that point, we've obviously put on additional details for the Speed Week, which is only between that D divide patrols, it was only an additional 32 hours. So I think speaks a lot of body, you know, that the the guys were actually working as well, wrote during that timeframe. So. Of the 152 tickets, I think an additional 65 were because of the details.
Was that on all roads or? Seven, seven, every road or?
It's all roads, but I believe it's, most of the speeding tickets were, you know, the state highways. I don't believe the interstate was a factor in most of that.
And then I thought you mentioned we got one.
There's three D guys during that time as well. Two which were felonies. One, one being a LeAndres law felony and one being a. Almost four times the lead with the little limit.
Yeah.
So, yeah. No.
No, it's kind of on 787.
None were though.
No.
None, none of them were on 787.
No, they were all on Broadway.
Didn't or just all?
Cool.
I think that's what he asked you.
Well, he was talking about the line.
So, and then, and then from that conversation. Ryan had brought up that the LiDAR radar system that the village has is from 2010.
Yes.
And was bought via Grant. So he talked about going and looking at what a new LiDAR gun is going to cost. We, and currently the one that we have is is not working properly.
Correct. Correct.
And the new one, uh, is on state contract for twenty-three hundred dollars.
Twenty-three forty, yep.
You're saying a radar gun, one gun?
It's a laser.
Yeah.
It's, it's not radar, it's a laser. It's, it's much more accurate and you can pick the, keep it up further away, um, than a radar gun.
And currently you have one?
Yes.
I mean, would you want to do at least two?
Nope. Uh, the cars will have radar. This would be a, like a, it looks like a gun, uh, you know, it's a bigger gun, but it'd be outside. You know, something you poke, you point at your window and you specifically target a vehicle and see how fast that vehicle's going.
Right. Just when you're going to hit it through the window, but you don't even have to get out of the car anymore.
Yeah.
So for instance, the, the reason, so the, the car mounted radar, I'm going to move on, has the car, there has to be pointing front or back.
Correct.
Versus if we do lower the speed limit, they could sit at the school zone, not in traffic and radar in Ward Lane and get people that are speeding on Ward Lane on the school zone.
Yeah, for instance, like seven eight seven, even if you can park pointing, it's sometimes difficult to determine which car, you know, and obviously six one five. This car, you're, you know, this unit, you're specifically pointing at that vehicle and you're, you know, you're being able to check which car as it passes. So you know, you know, exactly.
Yes. So it's kind of like, uh, a, a baseball, when they do the speed for the baseball. But it's just a lot more accurate.
Like, like there's a, there's an eye view here. You can kind of see him. He's got it up to his face, but he's, I think there's another picture maybe of what he sees.
Yeah.
Alright, so you're looking for purchasing a new one?
Yes.
One is free.
Twenty-three forty.
And one is enough?
Yes, yeah.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
We just probably spent your twenty thousand dollars.
Correct.
We're in the hole now.
Maybe use that LiDAR gun a lot.
There should be still more money in that.
Are there other things we can sell? Because I like, is Cicero, what else does Cicero want?
Well, they're looking for five vehicles actually.
Oh.
Because out there, they're putting, uh, e- every school's getting a school resource officer. So they needed cars for them. So it's nothing more. They're going to mark it up and it's just going to drive to the school.
Is it, is it a big, uh, is it difficult right now to get vehicles?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, you're usually a year out for a vehicle.
Wow.
And then, then you got the time to outfit. So.
Might they be interested in, uh, Toyota Camry?
I'll see what I can do.
Alright, uh, next on the agenda is, um, lowering the village's speed limits. You know, bit of a discussion, the governor recently signed legislation allowing villages and other municipalities to lower it to twenty-five miles per hour.
Under.
Yep. So for the far village, that would include village streets, but it excludes all the state highways, Broadway three seventy-eight, three seventy-seven. Uh, part of discussion with the chief was about Ward's lane as you're approaching the school. Um, right now, I would kind of lean towards leaving that road as well at thirty, only because it's one of our main thoroughfares designated. This is before discussion. And then the chief is recommending school zone, um, down to twenty.
Yeah, we talked about twenty.
Uh, that would require us getting some beacon lights like down by municipal apartments. Um, apparently right now there's no speed limit signs on Ward's lane. Um, so, but this would entail changing all of our thirties to twenty-fives and then incorporating this study that was done previously a few years ago. Um, getting in line with our local law from, I think it was what?
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen. And then there is also some street signs that I've noticed that are appealing, that it's hard to even read. Uh, the one study is already done, so we'll be compiling whatever signs we're going to need for that. Um, I don't know who's going to take the lead on this, but then it's how many backer, uh, speed limit signs we need to change.
Twenty.
Okay.
Did you actually go around it, Cal?
I did.
Okay. And then.
I'm going to go double check.
An inventory of the street signs, name signs that might be can change and that might be in that.
Uh, wasn't, that wasn't in that one. Uh, there were other things and I do have that on here, uh, for what, what we need. Um, but that wasn't in here, like the street signs was.
Okay, so that's a separate thing that would need to be booked back.
Um, in there is also, uh, a few stop bars, um, according to the, the local law. So like at, um, Graffunder. They wanted to, so there, there were a couple of things that it didn't ask for there. So.
So is that the?
Yeah. I assume the DPW can do that.
They can. They have the, the court that gets great painted.
Okay, good. And that's, that's easy. Yeah, that's good.
Alright, so the one study is done. Brian's counted the, the speed limit signs. Well, we'll have to actually have more because now you got to add to Ward's lane. We'll have to.
That's important.
But I would admit, I, I, I do agree with Maggie that you may want to leave.
Oh, I counted putting third, I find thirty signs.
So there's no sign there. So even if you left it at thirty, you still have to have thirties.
We could take one of the thirties that works.
Oh, see, that's what, put it on Ward's lane.
I like it.
We would have to look at the, those beacons are, aren't cheap. So we would have to look at that for, I, I don't know if getting the speed limit lowered first and then look at the school zone.
I think we should do it together personally.
Do you? Uh, I don't know. I don't know if it's, uh.
I mean, what?
Because that's a lot of signage.
Right?
Right.
So if we actually bite the bullet and do this now, get it done, let's do it and not talk about it.
Right.
And we can use our funds because it's a, it's a government issue. So.
So first we have to have a, a public hearing, right, to lower the?
Yes.
So I would like to motion to put that on the objective for.
Well, do we have to have the, um, uh, and again, I'm, I'm in favor of all this, but do we have to, uh, decide on, uh, leaving out Ward's lane? And so that we have the exact curving, so we don't have to come back and have a second public hearing?
Exactly. You would have to have it written into the, into the local law, all streets.
Yeah.
But this already says Broadway, Van Rensselaer Boulevard, Route three seventy-eight, that we would just.
Well, I, so I fixed that. Um, so I, I made some, some suggested edits in, in there just to, to clean it up, uh, um, like the other ones. I don't know. Here's, so here's my thing. Um, and this is the very little that I know about law, um, not being a lawyer. But let's say the state puts in a road here, they change a road there, then we have to get in line with that. Um, so I guess the way I, um, I put it here, I suggested it. The speed limit shall be twenty-five miles per hour in all Village of Man's owned streets. Um, simple like that where we have, uh, have. No, no, but leave out the, um, the, that part. I mean, we can ask Steve. I'm fine.
Steve's here.
Was he on?
Steve? I'm here.
So for the proposed local law, again, the very little that I know about, about law, um, is it enough to just say the speed limit shall be twenty-five miles per hour on all Village of Man's owned streets? Uh, or, um, do we need to add in the, uh, all New York state-owned roads, Broadway, Van Rensselaer Boulevard and Route three seventy-eight? Uh, will be the posted speed limit or is that, um, do we need to add that?
No, I don't, no, I don't think you need to add that. Because what's going to happen is you're going to end up signing all of the village streets with twenty-five mile an hour, um, uh, speed limit signs.
Bob, what if we exclude Ward's lane? Just say that explicitly?
Yep. Yeah. If you're going to exclude any village streets, you need to explicitly state that. Yes.
It would be good, so, uh, after that, you could say.
On Ward's lane.
Ward, Ward's lane shall be excluded from this law.
Well, I mean, I would like to see, before we start the public hearing, I would like to have a final draft of, you know, so I, I would want to set up.
We're going to work on that for next meeting and then we'll set it up for the following.
Steve, would we have to set up a separate law for the speed zone? As opposed to? If they're going to put a speed, if they want to put on Ward's lane, have it thirty miles an hour, but then where the school zone is, it's going to be twenty miles an hour? What state law? I'd have to take a look at the, uh, at the current village law because I know we do designate, uh, speed limits and stop signs. Um, within, you know what? Let me, let me tell, I've got a copy of the, uh, the code book here. Like, go on to something else and I'll take a quick look.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, it needs to be another, uh, letter or would it just be under A?
What's, no, the, um, the speed limit onwards, the school zone would, could be another thing, although Steve can let us know.
I think it would have to be a sub. I would, I would expect it would be a sub.
Yeah.
And then part B, do we, that was cut off?
I fixed that, um, on, see, I, I only go based on what's on here. So I fixed that. Um, that's, I don't see any need to change B.
And do we need B? Is that part of it?
Well, I think it's because it's reckless driving. Is that the?
But my question is, and Ryan probably better have answered this, that that's already part, reckless driving is already part of state, other state, you know, the.
Yeah, the vehicle.
Vehicle traffic law. Do we really need that in there?
Okay. I guess that's a, then a question for Steve though, uh, uh, right?
Because then we could take out where it's driving prohibited.
Right, just leave it with the speed lane.
My, my suggestion would be, I'm just taking a look at the, the code book right now. If you're going to do anything related to speed, you should probably include it all under one local law. Yep, and I'm, I'm, I'm just freewheeling here, but say, you know, the, um, this, uh, speed limit on all village roads, uh, uh, will be twenty-five miles per hour, except for the following, and then uh, include as like a, a sub A and a sub B, uh, if you want to say Ward's lane. Exclude Ward's lane, designate what the speed limit is there. And then in the context of the school zone, you'll have to define what the school zone is. Uh, the area where it is and define what the speed limit's going to be there and indicate that that's during, um, during the school day or school hours.
Let's clarify. We'll, we'll work on that and then revise the introduction the next meeting.
Yeah, because if you see, um, twenty-fifth street in front of Waterbelie, it goes down to fifteen when the lights are blinking.
We could do fifteen, but.
Yeah, that's not a hill.
Could be.
Well, that's one reason I didn't really want to change Ward's lane to twenty-five. Can you get hard enough coming down that road and doing the three, we're all twenty-five.
That's the thing. That's why do you just see what it's like with twenty-five and not do a school zone? And we just put more school signage out.
And so have we, have we, can you go on the school zone without actually having the law changed and the blinking lights?
That I don't know. I don't know.
I mean, just real quick reading, you know, section eleven of U D C, uh, be, vehicle traffic law. I think you need the beacons to, to establish, these beacons at a time.
Could be signed as school zone, but it's not.
What?
They'll be twenty-five.
Well, if you had it at twenty-five, I think in that section, you'd write, you know, it'd be like the penalty would be worse if we're speeding during, in a school zone during the school.
It's kind of like speeding in a construct, construction.
Right.
Right. So.
Um, I don't.
So.
I'd almost like to see the designated school zone.
So can we, why don't we figure out how much that costs for those illuminated signs and we'll, we'll come back the next week and suggest two different things, less than with that.
Yeah.
For the designated school zone, is it a certain distance from, from a mile?
Quarter mile. It's a quarter mile distance.
In each direction and.
Not total, right?
Total.
Oh. So an eighth of a mile in each direction of.
Pretty big. And how long is Ward's lane?
That's what I was about to say. So to me, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, but about that problem.
So, so to me, it's probably all the way to the bottom and then whatever the eighth of a mile is uphill.
Right. So it would be once you start coming down or going up, you're in the school zone.
Yeah, so probably right after you pass Park Drive, the, uh, Park Drive where it intersects with Wards.
I'm sure it'd be further up the hill.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I mean.
It'd be like Dutch Village at least, if not further.
Right now we just have the cross, the crossing and the crossing guard.
Correct. And then we have the signs that are in the middle, the plastic ones that sit on the double yellow line.
Well, back to your point, if we change it to twenty-five, which I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. But we could still get the beacon lights because it's thirty on Broadway and we have the beacon light.
Or the sign you talked about that gives your speed.
Yeah, on the pole.
And we can set that, that says slow down for the school.
Because you let them, you can change the wording to you put, you know, slow down school ahead or something like that. So.
So we can look at a couple options and relay that, be good.
I mean, the beacon, people, one out of ten, crosses on the crosswalk after the beacon light.
I think the beacon light you have to press.
You do.
So that's the thing.
That would be for somebody crossing.
Correct.
Not the driver.
Correct.
I think the flash, the slow down sign with your speed would be more effective than the school itself flashing, considering how far apart they would be.
Well, and that would be on the speed limit sign. So you would have the speed limit sign, like in Niskiuna, they have the speed limit sign and then underneath it, it's solar.
Your.
Your speed, and then it tells you to slow down.
Right.
So you're walking, well, I'm really probably unable going up the hill. It's probably only coming down the hill, right?
I mean, we'd say both ways, but I think that if you had that, I mean, that would probably take care of, you know, zoning it and everything else, you know? And you put that closer to the school rather than being so far away.
Right.
The beacon would be like at the intersection.
So not designated as school zone, but using those your speed things close to the school might, might be more effective.
Right.
And then leave it at a thirty or drop it into twenty-five?
I think it's a, I think, I think. I'd go all twenty-five.
It's safe, simple.
Everybody agreed with twenty-five on Ward's lane or no?
I'm finding twenty-five on Ward's thing.
Do you put the school zone or the whole?
Skipping the school zone.
Skipping the school zone.
And just have it up. Down enough to comfortable. Yeah, I, I kind of agree with your initial assessment, but we would carry that, so.
But then do we, you have the school zone or?
No school zone, but still do the, your speed is.
Okay, so no school zone. Because I was just coming up with the verging for that.
No school zone, but keep it, well, I mean, it could be thirty for now and we could do, you know, it's kind of like a study with the speed trailer and see what type of speeds we're getting.
Well, we can move the speed trailer there this week and we can come back to you with actual numbers of what we're seeing. Because that, that will, you know, that'll be the same process. They'll say slow down and all that. We can set that up and see if, let's see what the numbers come up to.
Yeah, we're getting good compliance of thirty.
Then the sign might go.
The ones that go on the pole, can they calculate like the one you have now? Like give you a record or?
I believe so, yeah.
You just got to get the software with them. So we can download it.
We'll remember that next time.
Yeah. Yeah, because we had to get it after the fact.
Yeah.
It.
So for right now, um, uh, do we want to leave the speed limit at thirty, uh, or?
We'll come back to this next week.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We'll run it for a week and then we can give you, it's a, it's an extensive, uh, printout of the study, so.
But, but it's, it's the consensus amongst everyone, uh, we don't want the wording for the school zone.
Correct.
Okay, I'll take that out. Okay, I'll take that out.
All right.
So right now, I just, I have it in there, uh, with the thirty, that could be taken out before we open it for a public hearing.
Yeah, we'll get stuff at first and then, yeah, let it down for the public then, then too. All right, so the Soldier on Project, um, thirty-five Broadway, um, they were denied funding again to the community renewal program. Uh, they are asking for local leader support, um, sending letter to the governor, expressing his appointment that this project, the executive system deny the funding. So I told them I would bring a brief report to, um, get a full book or not get a full book, that signed a letter of support to the governor. So far, we just have the sheriff, the county executive.
Town?
No.
Oh, it's been a little bit.
Yeah, I know. People have signed the letter already, but they're in the village. I did clarify with them that they do not have all the approvals yet, as is stated, they're supposed to change that because they only got preliminary site plan so far. And then, you know, for me, I feel kind of like if, yeah, we're this far along in the process, to not support them could be detrimental to the project, even though they're losing momentum anyway, but I think it's still important.
So what happened was apparently they were in the queue to be approved, and because of the escalation of prices for construction, to make sure that the projects that were approved before actually met their new construction cost totals, they had to give them more funds.
Oh.
And so that ate away at the pot of funds left, that would have resulted in an approval for Soldier on.
So was it technical law on their part?
Correct, it was simply just run out of money.
It was money.
So with these letters, this will now be right on the top, waiting for the next round of money, which is supposed to be opened in, I think, October, they said, and then February, March, they could, you awarded the grant and then shuffles move in by, by June.
Okay, so by all the other concern was that, does it put us in a conflicted position to be, you know, for this going to prove their final, you know, site plan, but yet be supporting it, you know, on their, on their fiscal side? You know, to do the letters, is that, is that, is that a conflict?
We've done that before, we said at the bowling alley, we sent a letter of support in the same scenario. Steve, did you hear what Tim said?
I did.
So any concerns that there be a conflict with us sending a letter of support when we're there gonna be approving the project?
Well, the question is, is the board going to be approving the project?
Well, they've gotten preliminary site plan already, they're just seeking for, um, the funding to continue to move forward. So.
Yes, why, I, I guess, I don't know, what do you mean, why would we, why would there be a conflict? Work.
No, that's what I'm asking, I'm just kind of in my mind, I, you know, they're coming to us for their, they need to get their final site plan approval, but they're also looking for us, you know, for the support.
We have to approve that, we have to support any project that comes before the board.
Or, or reject it though, like, or, yeah, but I mean, like, and so, again.
We wouldn't, they wouldn't come to us for site plan approval, we, I mean, uh, well, obviously, we do not like the letter of support, we surely might consider it rejecting their.
What about the possibility of saying that the village supports the, uh, the proposal, but is in the process? And I didn't, where are we, uh, have we given the site plan approval yet, no?
No, preliminary.
Preliminary.
Okay, and then indicate that, uh, the, the village board, uh, uh, su- supports the appli- supports the application, indicate that, uh, the board has given preliminary site plan approval and is in the process of giving final site plan approval to the, uh, to the application.
All right, cause somewhere here, they wrote, they thought they had, they had walls.
Oh, they said, they said something about walls.
Right, right, that, that was the email, the letter from Liz Benjamin.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought, I thought the letter went beyond where the village board was with this particular project.
It did.
And I think, I think the letter from the village board should simply state where the project states at this point in time. And that, you know, at, at present, they're, uh, they support the project, and this is where, where things stand at this point in time.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you, Steve, that, uh.
All right, so I'll find that when I can look at it more closely and change it, and then once that change is made, the board's okay with.
Yeah, so it's like.
Do we need a resolution on that or just need a board approval with Steve? Put it on the record or?
I will, I will state that if the changes are made, I'll, I can support the, you know, with the changes that Steve suggested to the letter.
Second.
All favor?
All right.
All right. So I sent you all, um, the proposal we, we see, um, you guys were at the last meeting, but regarding, or restoring our grant application.
Yes.
But they'll set a proposal. So fifty-five hundred dollars for test A, and then a full bus, it'd be conceptual site plan, if needed, three thousand dollars. We're rendering out a project, which is a thousand, and market feasibility analysis, which is another thousand. Uh, I'd like to propose that we approve up to the total ten thousand five hundred dollars so that we don't have to wait two more weeks for a board meeting to get more approval, cause we're on a deadline of October, what, eleventh, I think? Yeah, from the eleventh, this is with this grant application.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All favor?
All right.
Up to ten-five?
Ten-five, yep. And then I received a letter from Brianna, uh, following the, so it's quicker. Meg, and who, the concerns, I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to work in the community I grew up in. I am stepping down from being the youth director of Menance. I have enjoyed all my time and service to the village, but now as a mom, I wanna enjoy my time off in the summer with my children. Thank you for allowing me to work with the children of Menance for numerous years, sincerely, Brianna Hawke. Um, I worked with Brianna on language to put out for a new director, um, and I asked, um, Nicole, to put it out on Facebook and then get it in the new, um, new activities.
Can you share it with us when you get a chance?
Village of Menance is accepting applications for a park on youth director applicants, must be a village resident at least twenty-one years of age, possess good people skills, especially with young children, be organized with strong management and leadership qualities, position entails organizing various events, activities throughout the year, help organize the annual village picnic, and coordinate the summer youth program, which runs for six weeks in July and August from nine AM to twelve noon, Monday through Friday at the Gander Smith Memorial Park. Additional details provided during interviews. Ideal position for a teacher or stay-at-home parent of school-aged children. Applications, applications can be picked up and returned by September thirtieth at the village office, three eighty Broadway during business hours, eight AM to four PM.
Are we giving a, uh, salary commensurate with experience, or are we giving a rent? No, I know, I just, I didn't know if, uh, if we were including that in a book statement. Yeah, I see both ways.
Twelve or twelve fifty?
Uh, wasn't it more for, for her?
And she would like to sit in with me when we get a few people.
It's fine.
I'll get that, I think we'll, we'll, every, was that part in?
It was.
Yeah, that's, that's, they, they do that with other things.
So we'll get that on Facebook, and then like I said, that's here, they have today, but I'll get it out.
The next time.
We're not giving much time for this, but get it in by the thirtieth, and maybe change it a little bit.
We can, we can delay that, we have to, just to make sure you get the right candidates.
Yeah, Halloween is coming up soon, but, uh.
But when is hers effective?
Their last day was the day of the village. The nineteenth, yeah, that would have to be changed, cause next activities, I think, would be the nineteenth. We'd have to give them maybe to the end of the month or something.
I'm just lip picking sometimes with, uh, with people, I just wanna make sure we have enough time to.
Um, and I think the last I had was, um, the board, uh, has sent in a notice tomorrow. The village board had agreed to a employee appreciation picnic. Details will be Sept- September twenty-eighth, five to seven at the park, this is a backup in case it rains like last year. Um, but I'm gonna send a notice to all the department heads, and then if you can let your members know, and then get back to me with a tentative count. And I spoke to this today, and she's like, the menu.
So she'll do all the cooking?
Yeah. Oh, okay. Uh, yeah. Yeah, more done.
I got nothing.
Wow. Wow.
Can you believe them?
It's amazing.
Like, I threw it all in already, so I wanted to get it.
Sounds like we're just waiting on an update, uh, from LaBella on, uh, the high service resource board. Um, yeah, is that right?
So Jen said she, they were working on a report.
I think everything will be back. Next time.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
All right, I gotta.
Oh, Bill.
Yes, you wanted, you wanted an answer there.
Yes, all right.
All right, um, exact numbers are tough when you're dealing a year out, but, uh, if you remember, we put eight hundred thousand dollars of surplus to balance the budget for twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, and after the budget transfers and amendments, et cetera, et cetera, um, there's about two hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars left of that eight hundred thousand, so that's money we still keep. We didn't spend that, so it's good. Um, but we also took in a little extra money in revenue. Um, we took in an extra, uh, based on the budget, uh, three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in sales tax. So that gives us about, that increases our, uh, fund balance nicely. Um, we've got, uh, we took in an extra, almost seventeen thousand dollars in, uh, safety building permits and safety fees. Um, twenty-nine thousand extra in mortgage tax, but I think that, I gotta go back and check that, cause I gotta check with the auditors. Um, I think part of that was the previous year, but I'm not sure. Um, so we're, we did good for the year, even though we did spend some extra money. But, um, we're doing all right, uh, just to let you know, for this year, uh, as of nine-one, we had unpaid village taxes of ninety-five thousand dollars. Um, they've got until November first to pay them. And then if not, then they go to the county and the county reimburses us. Um, and then for unpaid water and sewer, it's about ninety-seven thousand dollars as of September first. Um, they've got till December to pay that, or it'll roll over onto the January bill. And then if they don't pay it by April, it rolls on to their taxes for next year, so. Um, but that's just the outstanding water, sewer, and, uh, taxes we have right now. Uh, we just sent letters out to all the people that haven't paid their taxes, reminding them that they have until November first to pay them, and we also told them how much the interest was if they pay it in October. So.
Who was the biggest one?
Uh, hang on. Who are the big ones?
River View?
Um, no, I don't think it's River View. Um, CDTA, which I am writing a letter to them right now, uh, I'll get it to you, Meg, cause you gave me that email, um. They didn't file a request for tax exempt status before the, uh, exempt day of March first, twenty-twenty-one, and therefore they are at assessed value, and they didn't, uh, do the work before that either, so they should pay taxes on that piece of property.
I'm not sure.
Huh?
My conversation with them, that doesn't sound correct, they filed stuff with the town.
Yeah, and I got the letter here from, um, Ron Milk-Minfield of the town, it said, uh, they should pay their taxes because they didn't file it in time, he never got anything. He sent them a letter. He sent a letter on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one to, uh, Amanda Avery, who was the general counsel for them, that, um, they were complaining about the school tax bill through, through the village, or through the town. And it says, um, I have nothing to show the property was converted prior to March first, twenty-twenty-one taxable status date, and that is why the parcel has no exemption on the twenty-twenty-one assessment roll. September school tax bill was issued. In addition, I see the stat, statute discusses payment in lieu of taxes under the public authorization, uh, public authority L section. No such pilot was presented to me. My recommendation is since the property was not developed into a park and ride by taxable status date, March one, twenty-twenty-one, the tax bill you sent should be paid, and I will monitor the progress for the twenty-twenty-two assessment roll.
Who's this?
We are a year behind them, so we're using the twenty-twenty-one tax roll anyway, so they should pay us our bill. I'm getting the letter up, I'll get it to you, Meg, I just started drafting it this afternoon.
Were you just reading a letter yourself that you wrote, or somebody sent that to you?
That's the letter Ron sent to the general counsel at CDTA. He sent that on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
They have an application from February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two in with the town.
Yeah, well, that's twenty-two, this is twenty-one. They were complaining about the school taxes. And if, our assessment role is based on twenty-twenty-one, so they didn't file it, so we take the town's assessment role for twenty-twenty-one, and that's the tax bill.
All right.
They owe us thirty-six hundred dollars.
Do the letter, Bill, and then, um, I may look into setting up a meeting between CDTA, the town, village, and whoever else to get this resolved for thirty-six hundred dollars.
School district, maybe.
School district, yeah.
I don't know what, I'll get ahold of Ron to find out what happened, but this is what he sent me.
All right. All right, so I'll be.
They owe us, uh, best owes us which is, uh, iron.
Is there any more questions?
Um, Park One, property five. Park One Property, 5 Elmwood Road owes us.
That's the bowling alley.
Yeah, um.
That shouldn't be much.
Albany Mac owes us, but they changed owners there, that's Gabrielle or whatever. Um.
All right, for some reason I thought that, uh, were you on to Otis, honey?
Well, we got a couple in from, if I looked at the, which I don't have with me right now, the August report was, uh, the August 1st report, there was some big numbers in there, people noticed, but we got them in August.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Do you have anything to add for a second?
Motion to adjourn?
Okay.
All favor?
You have a half hour. Oh, yeah, an extra time, I saw that too.
I have a question, where can we, five, five holes, can we go, where can we, what? Where's our side of the clock?